We're recording now.
Thank you. Okay, it is April fourteenth. It is six P M. And my name is Julia Johnson, Mayor Julia Johnson, and I am calling this Seager Woolley City Council meeting to order. I would like for all of you to stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Do the repub -- which stands one nation.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a quick recall, and then we have a change up in the agenda tonight. We have a couple of late items, and we're gonna be moving another item around. So before I do that, let's begin with Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Kevin Loy.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Thank you. And Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Present.
Good. All right. Thank you. Okay, so before I ask for approval of the agenda, we do have two late items. I don't know if you received them. The first is a it's a grant that we are submitting to E-DASK. It is for the intersection at Highway nine, actually township and Highway nine and McGargyle and the John Liner Road. So that has been put in. I want to put that on the consent agenda. Unless you feel there needs to be a discussion. I know we've put the grants on the consent agenda before, so having it come in late, I'm just putting it there. The second is the is the Reed Street property. We do have to talk about that, so I am putting that on as I'm gonna put it under new business, if that's okay with all of you, simply because we have not, as far as I know, really talked about the agreement with that. So I'll put that under new business. And the third is the Helping Hands Food Bank. I am going to pull that off because I think with the changes that are going on there, it will be really important for everybody to kind of take a look at that. Any comments that you may need to make or any concerns that you have can be voiced at that time. So with that said, and that is a lot, I am looking for an approval of the agenda, adding the grant to the consent agenda, adding the property Reed Street property to new business, and pulling Helping Hands Food Bank off and putting it under unfinished business. So.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor. Yeah, I move the amended agenda.
All right.
I'll second Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion carries. So then, looking at the consent agenda, looking for an approval, and of course, this is with the Helping Hands Food Bank pulled and the Skagit County Economic Development Grant on. Do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Right.
Madam Mayor, a second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Motion carries. So I want to welcome tonight. We actually have some guests here tonight. First, I want to welcome Commissioner Janiky, who is sitting in on the meeting. I also want to welcome Mayor Steve Sexton, who's gonna be doing a presentation here in a few minutes. And then from Helping Hands Food Bank, I think it was Nicole Long that I saw who was on. And Rebecca, Rebecca Skrindi is here. Thank you. Okay. And I think that that is it. Is Tina Tate on? I heard she might be. And I want to welcome her. She is.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you, Tina. Thank you for being here tonight. All right. So let's begin tonight. The first thing on the agenda is the Helping Hands Food Bank update with Executive Director Rebecca Skrindi. And I don't know, Rebecca, if that's you or Nicole, who's gonna be presenting.
Nicole is gonna be hopefully sharing some slides with you. Thanks for having us today. It's been a long year, and we still have a long way to go, but we wanted to give you kind of an update on what's going on and what great things are happening at Helping Hands. Let's, we're gonna back it up just a little bit to give some context, but prior to COVID, we were serving about 750 families through the door at the Solution Center, and we fed about 150 families every week through at Marble Mount. Marble Mount had closed, so we, with Inspired Church, connected and reopened them under Helping Hands in Marble Mount. We were serving about 1,100 students in the Seager Woolley School District under our Cutting Hunger on the Weekends program, which is called CHOW. And then we were serving about 85 residents from Seager Woolley and Burlington through our mobile food. So that was prior to COVID, and then, you know, COVID hit, and we got a little bit busy. And so Helping Hands in 2020 served over 710,000 individuals. When you look at that number, yes, they're duplicated numbers. At the point that we were so busy, we got to the point where we were just counting boxes of food and cars that were receiving the food. So we didn't turn anyone away. We were serving in Anacortes, Alger, Mount Vernon, Seager Woolley, two days a week, Marble Mount, Concrete, Hamilton, and we did multiple mass handouts in Burlington. We did a potato feed. When the potato trucks came and we handed those out to the community, and through our CHOW program, we served 85,000 children through that program. And that, they receive about seven meals in that bag every week, and that gets delivered directly to their house. And we almost reached 7 million pounds of food that we distributed, meaning that more than doubled what we did in 2019 at 3 million pounds of food. So currently, we're serving about 5,000 families each week. I did the math for last week, and it was close to 12,000 individuals that we served last week. We have seen a dip in that's, that actually is a dip in numbers based on the stimulus and tax returns. And this is kind of a lower time of the year normally anyway. I've talked to Snohomish at executive directors. She normally sees about 200 families a week, and they're down to 50 families a week. So there is a decline in numbers, which is great. So the CHOW are still around 2,200 children on average each week, but we also open that up to every city in the county. So we go all the way out to Anacortes, all the way up to Marble Mount, La Conner, all over this, wherever the families need it, that's where we go. And we have a group of volunteers and National Guard that show up every Friday, and they get loaded up and out they go. We are currently serving about 250 families on average that we deliver directly to their homes for multiple reasons. Through the pandemic, not currently, but throughout, we took count of how many families that we served that were COVID positive, that we directly delivered to the house, and it was about 320 that we worked with the Health Department with, that we actually delivered food directly to their houses. So our next, as we focus now on, on kind of going into a recovery mode, our goals are to continue, obviously, to deliver food. We're gonna keep our CHOW program as strong as possible until all kids are back in school. So that's probably gonna be, hopefully, the 2022, 21, 22 school year. But we'll continue to do CHOW in probably higher numbers as long as necessary. That's a very well a program that has a lot of resources, which is great. We are building up some infrastructure. Part of the conversation that we were gonna have was some things we need to do to the house so that we can move our administration into the house, because we've been given the opportunity to have close to 20, 24 people hired permanently, well, not permanently, but hired as staff that the federal government will be paying for. And the goal is to put people who are unemployed or underemployed to work. The jobs are between $17 to $20 an hour, and they help us, they're gonna help us with the transition from a National Guard into whatever our new normal's gonna look like. And some of them actually will be the National Guard. We have eight of them, I think, that are laid off, that are interested in coming and staying with us and transitioning into those civilian jobs. That is gonna bring close to $300,000 to $325,000 worth of funds into the county through those programs. It's a federal program. We're gonna continue to remove all restrictions off our kids' programs where families can just choose the food as they needed. And then we're gonna continue our mobile food as long as we need to. We did have restrictions in the past, but as we have a high number of volunteers that want to deliver, we can continue that program, and hopefully, they continue with us throughout, even past the pandemic. We're creating new and exciting programs through the job training. It's the Department of Commerce has specifically spoke about Helping Hands being a place that we can put people to work, but then they can also go help other organizations like the Mount Vernon Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, the Distribution Center, but they would be stationed out of Helping Hands, just like the National Guard. So we're excited to be a part of that, and I'm glad that people are talking about us. And then we're gonna be expanding our navigation team and helping families recover. Once social help is being pulled back and people are starting to lose things like that, then we want to step in and help them navigate through whatever resources are out there. We, our goal is to, we kind of pushed some of these dates back due to, I think the National Guard's gonna end up staying through September, but everything's been very flexible. We do want to come back to the Food Bank or the Solution Center and do a drive-through model through the parking lot. As you can see, we built that nice road. Thank you for allowing that. And then we have our containers out front, and we're gonna continue that until I don't want to say where everybody's vaccinated, but we feel like we can support, we need to see the numbers go down so that we could, the building itself can support the amount of people that are walking through the door. So we really need to kind of wait until we see those numbers kind of ticking down, and we can be safe. So Alger has already gone back to its regular distribution. We got them all set up. And Concrete, we're hoping in May, we put together a outdoor freezer, refrigerator for them, a project that a lot of people helped with, so they can work on kind of making their building a little bit more social distance happy, because people don't have to stand on top of each other. Hamilton, we've got a lot of work to do there, but we're hoping to get them back in June. And then the Mount Vernon High School Distribution, we will be continuing that until they go back to school full time. So when they need the parking lot back, we will give, that's when we will come back. Marble Mount and Anacortes are officially ours. Marble Mount, we continue to work at the Inspired Church. And Anacortes, right now, we're gonna continue to do a drive-up, kind of pop-up model Food Bank until we can find a more permanent home. We're gonna continue our mobile food deliveries. We deliver to childcare facilities, long-term care facilities. We are going to continue that until the need is no longer there, using the wonderful volunteers that we have, which, by the way, started showing up this week. We've had probably six come back, and it's been really nice to see some of our, the old faces coming back and be able to start sorting produce that we can start using again. And then CHOW, the Cutting Hunger on the Weekends, our goal is to continue to support that as high, that as high as we can. So. The Emergency Food Bank AIDS, that's what they're called. We currently have three AmeriCorps folks, and we have 10 of the emergency food aides. We're bringing them onboard right now. We have four of them, but we have a bunch more in the wings getting ready to come back on. And that is the federal program that should support folks for six months to a year. And then the Department of Commerce is coming in with a program that's gonna be good for two years. So they're really pushing these programs, definitely to help the National Guard transition, and definitely to help people go back to work and get some more training. And then our resource team bringing in retrofitting the house so that we can be safe in there, since there's a lot of asbestos in there, and so that our admin mid-team can provide services like DSHS and other services to the community as needed. Some things that are coming up, I don't know if you guys have seen, we have our Leaders Inspiring Leaders event in June, June 12. Dr. Robert Gates is doing a amazing night of leadership and inspiration. And so if you're interested in that, there's a way to donate, if you're interested in donating to the Food Bank. And then if you have any needs, if you know anybody that has any needs for food, please, even if it's delivery, if it's a child, there's a way to sign up for that. And then please always share and like our comments on Facebook. And so that's does anybody have any questions?
I have a question regarding the pantries. I know that there are pantries. It was through Leadership Skagit, but I believe that they were also working with you to do that. Do you want to talk about that in a little bit?
Yeah. Open Table is the name of the Leadership Skagit group. Our programs manager, Miranda, is actually on that team, and they gave them an exception to work with us, but they're doing some food pantries, one out in the Swenomish Tribe, one in Seager Woolley, one in Burlington, and one in Mount Vernon. And we will be stocking them and making sure that they're full of food. And it's, it's meant to help those who are either on the street or that just need a little help, and they're close to them.
I thought it was a great idea.
That'll be a fun project to add to our list of off-site locations.
Yeah.
Rebecca, this is Councilman Allen. I have a question. Will the National Guard be done at the beginning of September or the end of September, or nobody knows?
Well, their orders are till September, but the amount of leave that they have to take and out-processing and quarantining and all the things that they have to do, they'll probably be leaving in August. Like, they'll probably be doing their, taking some vacation time in August, and the trance, the transition takes about a month, about 30 days.
But they have been a godsend for everyone. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for either Rebecca or Nicole? Well, really want to extend our thanks for everything that you're doing. Oh, my gosh, I know you just, you touched on all the programs that you're involved in, but it's really hard to imagine all the work that has to go into that to make that happen. I did hear from Senator Hobbs, who was telling me that he hopes to join his team when the session is over. So might be kind of fun to see him out there handing out boxes to people who may need them. So that's fantastic.
Yeah, I don't, we were asked what we would have done without the National Guard, and we, I don't, I don't see that 710,000 people would have been served by the force staff at that point, and the volunteers. And so we're very, Seager Woolley, Skagit County, and this whole area is in a debt of service to them, and we're thanking them very much. So, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so if there are no more questions, then we will move on to our second presentation, which is also as exciting. Good things happening here in the valley, and that is the Skagit First Step Center presentation with the City of Burlington Mayor, Steve Sexton. So welcome, Steve, and welcome, Tina. I don't know who's doing the presentation here, but looking forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and City Council for having us. I'll start it off, and Tina can correct me after, after I'm done, because that's, that's kind of how it usually works. So, you know, I've been, we've been on many committees, conferences, meetings about homelessness in our, in our valley for a number of years. And last year, when, when, when the COVID really hit hard and the eviction moratorium came into place, it really weighed even heavier on, on my thoughts about what's this gonna look like at the, on the other end of this pandemic? We talk about the Helping Hands and what that's looked like during this whole time. And, you know, we have an eviction moratorium that will run out. I think it's set to run out at the end of June. What's that gonna look like for our homeless populations that have to leave where they may currently be living? And I really did a lot of thinking on it, and it just came to me that, you know, the city of Burlington owns a piece of property that we've had for, I don't know, probably 12, 13, 14 years. And it's, it just seemed like the ideal spot to do something. I've been in a number of conferences with other cities and counties who have done emergency homeless shelters on city property or county property. And this one seems really ideal for that type of usage. Now, what I'll do is real quick, I meant to do a PowerPoint, but, you know, I frankly just ran out, ran out of the day. I'll share my screen if I can and show you kind of what we're looking at here. So this is, and I hope you can all see that. Can you see that? Okay? Okay, this is the, this is the actual property from Pease Road. It's 465 Pease Road is the address in Burlington. It's right off of Burlington Boulevard. It's got, this is a 6,400 square foot building that is on the property. The west side here is really, it's kind of chopped up awkwardly, but it will, it will work for us, I believe, for meeting rooms and offices. We're working with the Friendship House to be our management for this facility, 24/7 management, organized security there. And, but the key ingredient, I think, is, and Tina can, can correct me, the main thing we're really gonna do here with that facility is bring in and invite mental health workers, social workers, substance abuse professionals to come in and help folks where they are to make the improvements in their lives that they need to make, to get them further towards permanent housing. That's, I think that's, that those wraparound services are gonna be a key ingredient of this, of this facility. So that's, that's, that's it from the road. This is what it actually looks like. This is actually the facility. And there's the building I was talking about. You can see it's very long and narrow lot, it's just over an acre lot that we're looking at. And this is what it was looking like previously. It looks a lot different already. This is the actual planned layout. This would be Pease Road on the right-hand side of your screen with a building. And, and we're going to place on here 45 individual, we're calling them cabins. They're individual living units that were made by, they're called pallet shelters. They're made by a company that has been a construction company for years in Everett. And these folks started making these shelters about four years ago. And one of the things I always want to point out about pallet company is that they gained a lot of media attention in demand for their products, and they've had people approach them to automate their production lines to produce more of these units and make money on it. They refuse to do that because 90% of their workforce have experienced incarceration, homelessness, or addiction. So it's really their mission to, to support those folks and help them get back on, on their feet and, and transition whether they, they think they'd like to. So that's, that's the, that's kind of the layout of the, of the facility that where we're at. And this is actually, I know I did a, we had these on display, one of these units on display at City Hall here in Burlington for a while. The one on the right is the 64 square foot unit, and the one on the left is a 100 square foot unit. So we're gonna place 42 of the 64 square foot units on the property and three of the 100, 100 square foot units. And these both will allow up to four bunks and sleeping areas in them. They come with, there's an electrical hookup to them, a small wall-mounted heater for, for wintertime, an LED light and some outlets. And one of the things I reached out to pallet shelter to, to tell them, to suggest to them is that the power outlet should have a USB charger also for folks who want to charge their cell phone. Just little things like that, that we're working with them to help them improve their design a bit. But it's really very flexible for us in the number of folks we can put in each one. And I think that they'll, they'll be very easy to keep clean and through, from usage to use it from one person to another, to do that, to do the cleaning necessary. And they're very, they're very resistant to some of the mold and mildew and some of the, the water damages we see on wooden structures in this part of the country, which is, which is important. So I've got those, and I'm gonna go into, I tried to, I'm gonna show you this. This is what, I hope you can see this, it's probably pretty small. This is the back lot of the facility, and this was on what would have been May 3rd, I think, the first day of construction, when they were getting the grades done. And we just, we have some construction photos of what they've done in that period of time. They've poured all of the pads for, for setting the units on. We have 45 of these now poured. The crews have done a fantastic job. I think they've been out there 11 working days. It's just amazing what they've done. Here, they're setting the electrical panels for the electrical that you'll see is being run to each facility, or each, each unit, rather. And here's, and here's more of the pads. This is on the east side. The fencing has gone away. We're gonna put new fencing up, which it'll be slatted, so it'll provide some privacy for surrounding businesses, as well as the occupants of the units. And here's the trenching that they've done with electrical hookups to each unit. It's been, it's been, it's been a ton of work for, for the crews out there working, but they're pouring, this, this is, they call this the plaza. They wanted me to put my, they wanted me to put my footprint in this cement so they could write first step on it, but I thought that was, that's a little cheesy. So I passed. It looks, they're doing beautiful work, actually. So this is where the three, the 100 square foot units will, will be, because this is, this is all gonna be ADA accessible that way, which is, was important. And then this again shows all the electrical work that's being done. Just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things in motion at once. And I'm gonna go ahead and see if I can pull this one up if I can. And this is what it looks like today. I just took this this afternoon. Now, you can see it's all laid out. All the, all the pads are poured. We're gonna have lighting. You can see some light standard, for light standards here throughout. There's, it's well lit. Just, just a ton of work. And where we're at right now with the project is we have 37 of these. We want to do 45 units. That's how many pads we have. We have 37 purchased between the county funding. We got a great partnership with the county and the city of Mount Vernon as well, joined in on the funding. And so we have about eight more that we need to purchase, and we've got some, some great folks out in the community who are reaching out, asking if they can donate to that project. So we're just, we're well on the way. The units, the first 37 will be delivered on April 26th. Tomorrow, the, in the building that I showed you, we actually have a tenant that has been, their last day of occupancy is tomorrow. So right after that, we will be inside that, the facility itself, pulling up carpet, painting all the walls, putting new flooring down. Painting all the walls, putting new flooring down, just getting it all ready to go for. A May first goal, opening day. Just to get it up and running, operational while we work on some of the other longer, longer term. Facets that we can bring to that facility. Like I said, on the, on the right-hand side of that building. That I showed you earlier, that actually is the five thousand square foot warehouse. There's a, I know Tina's got a ton of ideas on how we can build that out. To best provide programs that'll help those folks in their transition that we, we would love to encourage them to take. So, that's where we're at currently, where we've been. Again, it's just, it's been a fantastic partnership between the county, the cities, the law enforcement. This is a huge thing for law enforcement as well as we get rolling and give, give them a spot where. I know every city is a little different, but when you, when we encounter folks in our parks, in our public areas. It, it'd be great, I think, for, not to speak for law enforcement, but I know, I've heard so many, for so many years now. That it'd be great for them to have a spot to, to take folks to, to get, get some help. So. That's kind of what I've got. I can send out any information that you folks may, may want or. And I would just, you know, if Tina or Commissioner Janiky wanna take over, I'd yield to them and. Tina, Tina's our, Tina's our, our partner expert on this whole deal.
Tina, would you like to give some more information?
Sure. So, I want to talk a little bit about the services that we'll be providing and. I want to start by saying that the opposite of addiction is not sobriety, it's connection. And that holds true for mental health and other reasons for people being homeless. Including the countless elderly that are out there that cannot afford rent because of their low income. And with that connection piece, this, this will be a place of connection. This is going to be a place where they can get connected to services. They can get connected to each other. They can get connected to law enforcement and they can actually build a community. So, we're gonna have regular meetings and let them have some say in what it is they need. I mean, you can't serve people without involving them in their own healing. So, that's really, I mean, the direction that we're gonna go. We're gonna bring in activities to keep people. Busy and give them a purpose. We're gonna connect them with employment. We're gonna connect to them with themselves. I mean, this just really. It's gonna be a ninety-day program for the cabins and it really is a first step for them. So, I, I just, I am, I've been wanting a project like this for the last six years and I'm over the moon that it's actually finally happening. Yeah, so that's kind of the, the program side, what we're planning.
So, Tina, would you say this is almost like a transitional housing? It could be for some people?
Yes, the ninety-day program is transitional and we are gonna be able to connect them with other services. So, for example, if they get clean and sober. And I was thinking maybe we could have some sort of an incentive program around that, but. And their ninety days is up. They could potentially go into the Friendship House Core Program, which is clean and sober. Or any of the other multitude of, you know, for women, there's other options, not for men, not for single men. But for women there are, so that's a little more difficult. But with the permanent supportive housing that's going in in Mount Vernon in a couple of years. This will also be a place that they can get on that list to get in permanent supportive housing if they're. You know, have mental health issues or reasons why they cannot live on their own. There's a lot of people out there who not only are, are addicted or mentally ill, but developmentally disabled. We've, we've encountered many in our core shelter that are developmentally disabled and are not able to. Really care for themselves and the services out there for them are very limited. But one of the things I do want to mention with that building is eventually putting in a night-by-night emergency. Shelter. So, in, you know, down the road, when we could get that building renovated and get sprinkler systems. Having another thirty to forty beds on a night-by-night emergency basis. And that's really where. You know, it'll be the night-by-night and then we can get them into the cabins for the ninety-day program and then move them. Out of that into another program or into permanent housing so that the options are endless.
Amazing. So, Council, I'm gonna give you a chance to answer questions or ask questions here, but first I want to hear from Commissioner Janiky. I know the county is playing a large role in this, being very supportive. So, please share.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Julia. The, it is a big undertaking. The county has contributed half a million dollars for the capital side of the project to. To help with the purchase of the cabins and to pay for some of the renovations and site work that is being done. And, and then capital is often the easier money to come up with. It's the operating costs that are, is tough. The county has, has committed four hundred and sixty-eight thousand per year for two years. And right now, unfortunately, that's not enough to meet the current budget. It, in fact, it falls one hundred and eighty-three thousand a year short. And, you know, we're exploring other options. We're even, we're even exploring, you know, possibly using some of the American Recovery Funds to fill that gap for that first year. But I'll tell you, my greatest fear is if we don't get buy-in from the broader community. You know, one-time bucket of money that the county has access to right now isn't going to pay for this forever. But I'm, I am so excited about how far this project has come. In from being, you know. I was gonna say, so Commissioner or Mayor Sexton. I almost said bulldogging it. That would be the wrong thing, but you know, really bring it, like mayors and police chiefs. And some county folks, including myself, had been needing and trying to figure out as a group, how to, how to, you know, put some solutions for homelessness. Into the community. And while we wanted something on a much more permanent basis. This particular idea with a place to have it, the property already owned by the city. And being brought forward as a solution and appropriately named first steps. Just makes so much, you know, makes so much sense. Anything is better than. I have been down when, at the riverbanks, when they're passing out things to warm socks and. Coat and new backpacks to our homeless folks who are literally wrapped in tarps to try to stay warm. And somewhat dry. And, you know, in the end, my mom always said, you know. You will be measured by how you treat people, Lisa, in your lifetime. And when you're walking down to the riverbank to hand them. Something warm that's gonna be soaking wet in, in, you know, the same day. We can do better and Mayor Sexton has brought us a path to, we can all do better. And, and Tina and Friendship House are, are right on board. We wouldn't be able to do it without. That case management, social service supportive, organizing the food and the security. If we didn't need security every night for ten hours, that would be a big chunk out of the budget. But we're concerned that without that, you don't, you know, this wouldn't be a successful project. So. My, my hope is that, you know, really, I think that the county is gonna have to come up with some more to get this thing off the ground. And that perhaps the success of it will carry it onward and through. But it is so needed. Those seventy units of permanent supportive housing, that's supposed to go to bid this fall. And so, you know, that would, and that will be about an eighteen-month construction. So, maybe this. You know, so it would be at the end of twenty-twenty-two before those seventy units of permanent supportive housing are available. But those also have full-time case management. That, that's the purpose of it. But even with that coming on, and we still need more, and we still need more, and we still need more. But this is such a great start. So, I just want to thank Mayor Sexton and Tina and Friendship House for, you know, helping keep the vision inspired. And really hoping to see City of Cedar Woolley being able to help out however you can help out. It's, it's a big lift, but I love it when we're all doing it together.
All right. Thank you. So, I'm gonna open this up to the council. Are there questions either for Mayor Sexton, Commissioner Janiky? Or Executive Director Tina Tate?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
And I'll just be a booger. Number one, Mayor Sexton, I admire what you're doing. I, I think it's wonderful. Basically, homelessness is defined by not having a home. How do we assure that people are not coming up the I-five corridor? To live in. This is a Skagit County problem. Skagit County is producing a lot of the money. I think the cities are gonna help you out. How do we make sure it's local homeless? You know, instead of imported homeless. Okay? Thank you.
Sure, Councilman Allen. And you know, I've, I've been asked that question countless times since I brought this idea forward. Last October, actually. And, you know, looking at it. Skagit County is the last county along I-five in Western Washington to have a twenty-four seven. Emergency homeless shelter, the last. If we were the first, I'd be much more concerned about that. But, you know, I think being last, that folks already know where their services are, a lot of them. And this program is gonna be different than many others that are out there. I mean, some of them. I, I've talked, I've toured a number of them. I've talked to the occupants who have been there three, four, five years. That's not, that's not what this program is intended to do. So, that I think right there will, you know, weed out or filter out some of those folks. But really, the, the interesting part to me, when I see homeless people on the streets, I pull over and start talking to them. And I, I've asked them and asked them and I, you know, I, I met one kid out at. Out front of Five Guys one evening and I asked him, I said, what's your story? How'd you get here? And I've always heard that the numbers eighty percent are local. And that's, that's been what I've heard from, from folks I've met, at least. Maybe it's anecdotal. Maybe there are some that are coming from other areas, but, you know, it, it's just. I think that we have a Skagit County problem that we need a Skagit County solution to. Now, we, we will have people transitioning through, no doubt. We have them anyway. You know, and they're on their way to Bellingham or Seattle or wherever, wherever they may be going. So, that's always, that's always gonna be a percentage of the folks, folks who see, see, live on our streets, I believe.
Well, I, I admire your initiative totally and I want to support it. And I, this is probably a little bit political for you. You can smile now. Not, but agrees with you, but, you know, I, I just want it, if this. If the county is putting in most of the money, it would be nice if our citizens in our county were served first.
Mayor Julia, can I add? Yeah, can I add to that? So, the eighty percent number is approximately correct. That is the number of people who during the homeless count. Identify an address in Skagit County as their last known address. But, you know, more, even more moving to me is, is on the age spectrum. Thirty-five percent of the people receiving homeless services last year were under the age of seventeen. And the last time we had a winter shelter, congregant shelter up at Seventh Day Adventist Church, there were forty-six. People on the coordinated, on the waiting list who are over sixty-five years old, who are either. Truly homeless or living in their cars. Most of them having to have made a choice between medical costs. And rent or mortgage payment. So, we've got an elderly. Age, so the elderly but sick, medical, medical challenges, living homeless. Which, they're, they're kind of invisible. I guess that, that's what not everybody sees. But when you, you get them down and, and, or Community Action will be doing the coordinated entry. And registering these people all off-site and prioritizing who gets the most vulnerable will receive shelter first. So, I, I expect a lot of the first shelter, first step shelters will actually be some of our elderly population.
And there's also gonna be social services provided, if I understood you correctly, Tina. Is that right? That there's going to be that opportunity for people to receive the help that they need, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And I just want to touch on what Lisa just touched on. That the, particularly with the coordinated entry system. People aren't going to be able to come up here and plop themselves into a cabin day one. They have to go through this coordinated entry system, which takes time. And I can tell you right now that the people that have utilized our winter shelter. The last three years have been locals and we had fifty people at the coldest point in the year. In our cold weather, so our winter shelter, that were all locals. They're regulars. We know them. And we see them time and time again. And so, those will be the people that will be served first. Now, that's not to say that somebody from outside of the area is going to get in. But a lot of times that's domestic violence, that's elderly, that's people with disabilities. It's not just, oh, the drug addicts are gonna all come up here. That's not how it works or how it will work.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have one question, if I might. Mayor, what does one of these units cost?
I think seven thousand dollars is what I heard. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the sixty-four square foot unit is seven thousand dollars and the hundred, or the hundred square foot unit is nine thousand. So, but I want to put that in perspective because I did this, I did this math for, for some folks. And if I remember it correctly, it's mayor math, so it could be a little bit off, but I'll, I'll give it my best shot. You know, one of those units, the way I, I explained it to a group that was looking at donating one of those. That can hold up to four people, four individuals, and they have a ten-year warranty on them. That means over a ten-year period, that, that one unit there for seven thousand dollars provide. I believe it was fourteen thousand six hundred bed nights for people who would otherwise be. Living on our streets, parks, wherever in our communities. So, that, that's the impact. So, it's about, you know, it's. Couple bucks a day per person at that, at that, at that level. So, it just, it is, it's big numbers for these things. I mean, we're, we're talking. You know, three hundred thousand dollars plus for all these units and, and it is big numbers, but we look at the overall, it's a, it's a big number upfront. But the long-term benefit is, is huge, in my opinion. So, that, that's how much they retail for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Mayor? Oh, go ahead, Carl.
Oh, okay. Wherever the mayor wants.
Go ahead, Councilman DeYoung.
Okay, thank you. First off, thank, thank you for being in attendance, Mayor Sexton and Commissioner Janiky. And Executive Director Tate. Wow, what. Mind-blowing, something of this magnitude is happening in Burlington and the Skagit Valley. And I just wanted to applaud the efforts and also just, just the legendary, well-known. Human Services nonprofit that you are partnering with is an example to the commitment that you're, you're. Want to be a forerunner in, in the area. I am, I've got a couple of questions. And I think I heard some of these, but I wanted to confirm them. So, pardon me if I didn't catch it all at once. It was a bit of a fire hose, but that's why I'm kind of backing up and going over some of the questions. You said that law enforcement would be able to drop off folks here. So, I'm just kind of wondering, what is the entry? You said that law enforcement would be able to drop off folks here. So I'm just kind of wondering, what is the entry metrics for folks to come in? Is it through social services, navigation teams? An officer on the street saying, this is where you need to go. Let me drop you off. That's the first question. I think some of the other ones have been answered. This is an eighteen, an older place for, not with families, but for singles only. Is that correct? And then this was a clean housing, meaning no drugs or alcohol. Is that also correct? And then I would think this is a post-COVID situation because you're putting four people in sixty-four square feet. And then is this, is this autonomous? Is it self-directed? How are people gaining access and egress? And if there is disputes, how are those resolved? Thank you very much. I appreciated the presentation and I look forward to the answers.
Hey, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll attack a few of those. As far as the law enforcement, how would they access the facility? Tina and I did sit in with the chiefs and sheriff meeting last month and had that discussion on them. And that's what we're going to this month. That's what we need to figure out is what's, what's the process when, when law enforcement comes into contact with someone who would like to find a better place to stay than where they currently are, whether it's in our parks, you know, on a corner bench, wherever, and or need some services? What's, what's the procedure to get them from there to the shelter? And that's something I, you know, I'll defer to Tina on that because it's, we're going to work that out. Because that's, that's a key piece of this. And I hope to get, we get them in a spot to get them settled and, and hopefully see the benefit of staying there, you know, and want to join that program. As far as the four people for shelter, this is, this is not, in, in, I'll let Tina address this also, but it's going to be a regular, like a couple with kid or some, a child or a couple, I should say, a man and woman or a group of friends. We're not going to assign people to bunk with other people. That, that probably wouldn't work out well. So.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know that I remembered them all. As far, you know, addressing the, the law enforcement drop-off piece, I believe that we're going to reserve four or five units for law enforcement drop-off initially until we can get that night by night going. But as far as the people in the cabins, it would be, we have a lot of people that have adult children, so over the age of eighteen. So mothers and sons, fathers and daughters. There's a lot of them out there. So they can be together in one, couples can be together in one. A couple with adult child can be, or adult children can be in them. But we would not be pairing strangers up. And quite honestly, I don't remember the rest of the questions.
I, I made a list. So what are the metrics for entry? And then the other side of the coin, where are the metrics of removal? It's ninety days, but what happens if there's a problem? So is that autonomous, self-directed? How do people resolve their disputes? And that this was a clean living situation, no drugs and alcohol? And, and you touched on about eighteen and over. So thank you.
Okay, yeah. First of all, it is not clean and sober. It is low barrier. They cannot use while they're on the property, but they do not have to remain clean and sober, which is the whole point. That's what we're lacking in Skagit County is a place for people to go and connect and hopefully get sober. The so coordinated entry, the, they go to, to Community Action and get on the housing interest pool, which gives them a prioritization score based on their vulnerability. So vulnerability being chronically homeless, mentally ill, elderly, disabled. And those are the top, the top ones that can't currently be served in Skagit County. So those would be our top priorities. And then as far as people leaving, you know, hopefully they leave successfully after ninety days. As we all know, there is not enough permanent housing in Skagit County. So until that is fixed, you know, hopefully we can get them into other shelters or other solutions. But who knows without, until we get enough permanent housing? If we have issues, we have a whole slew of guidelines for them that if they cross those lines, and I call this skill building. So this is an opportunity for us to teach people how to color within the lines a little bit, maybe not completely, but a little bit. That society has rules, society has expectations. And if you can follow these simple rules and expectations, you're golden. But if you break any of those, we're going to have sort of a strike system. First, they'll get a verbal warning. And then, you know, depending on the severity of the, of the rule breakings, if somebody gets violent or poses a danger to themselves or others or anything else like that, then they will be immediately dismissed. And there's a few others. So we have, we have a whole list of things as guidelines for that. Did that answer all your questions, Carl?
I'm curious about any representation there about from the people who actually live there? You know, that if they find a self-directed, if there's a problem there, that there, there's self-representation that comes and talks to you folks? Or is it talking through the director there? Thank you.
I'm going to cut you off, I'm sorry. We're coming up on the seven o'clock hour. We still have an entire agenda, agenda that we need to go through. This has been an excellent presentation. I did see where Councilwoman Kestie did have a question. Did you want to ask that, Joellen, real quick, like before we start?
Yes, please. I'll, I'll make it fast. So it's kind of, I guess, three questions. You, you said about the age of eighteen. So one of my questions was if a mother with a younger child, so then they wouldn't potentially be able to join the program. My other question is, so would registered sex offenders be able to join this program? And my last question is, so what you were saying then is people can get high off of the property, but then come in and sleep high in this program? Those are my questions. Thank you.
I'll answer the last one first, and the answer is yes. They could potentially go and get high or drunk and come back to the property. If they're to the point where they're like out of their mind, high or drunk, then they would go into crisis. Either the crisis center or the hospital, something like that. For families, women with children, there are a lot of other resources in Skagit County for families and women with children, and we would refer them out to those resources. And I'm sorry, I forgot the third one.
Registered, registered sex offenders.
Excellent question. Yes, no. Sort of a barrier to getting in, it's low barrier, not no barrier, is no registered sex offenders, no violent criminals, and no arsonists would be allowed.
All right, thank you.
Julia, can I say something? I'll be very, very quickly. You know, and that low barrier thing is something that we need to implement to comply with Martin V. Boise, frankly, to, to help with law enforcement have that tool for folks who need to get off of our streets. And I want to be very clear with, with, with council. I've said this at every meeting that this is not going to be a hundred percent successful. And it's not going to meet every need that we have in the county. And I don't think we should expect that. But it is that first step for Skagit County. It's the first step for these folks to, to get that transition. And I know I've, I've used that analogy a number of times, Tina and Lisa are probably tired of hearing it, but the greatest hitter and major of baseball was Ty Cobb. And Ty Cobb hit three sixty-six. Sixty-four percent of the time, he did not get a hit when he went to the plate. So if we can hit, you know, that gives, gives you some idea of relative success. So we're not going to be a hundred percent successful, but this, I think, is the best opportunity to start that momentum and build on greater success. Thanks.
All right. All right, thank you. I want to thank you for the presentation, for being here tonight. Great information, great questions. And a much better understanding of what you are looking to do within our county. If there are no objections, I am going to go out of order here. I'm going to step over staff reports and council reports for the moment. And if there are no objections by the council, I am going to bring both the inter-local agreement that we are looking at with Burlington. And after that, I would like to talk about the Helping Hands Food Bank so that our guests can be free to enjoy the rest of their evening without having to listen to us drone on through the night. So we will begin with the inter-local agreement with Burlington. And I believe that I have this. So with the inter-local agreement, what I had presented to you was what we had actually accumulated so far in the House Will Funds of fourteen oh six, which is about five thousand dollars. Now, the last time we had this conversation, I know there were others of you who were talking perhaps considering even more. In this, we did put the five thousand. I did call around, and I have to say you were all split on how much you really wanted to give. My question to you is, do you want to move forward with this inter-local agreement? And the second question is, if you do, what is it you would like to see contributed as a one-time gift, a startup gift for the, or contribution, I should say, not a gift, contribution that we are making to, to the, I want to make sure I say this correct, the Skagit First Step Center.
Well, Mayor, if I might break in here, I would suggest that it's a very admirable project. And I would be more than willing to support, you know, what our original number was.
Looking at five thousand, did you want to? I, I, I'm curious if the council would be interested in purchasing, doing the contributions so that if they so choose, they could purchase at least one home for the, which is seven? For the for the center, the First Step Center.
Madam Mayor, Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
Thank you. I would support up to seven thousand to purchase one of the houses. Our shelters.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there more discussion? What would the council like to do here?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, that the City of Cedar Woolley buy one unit for the Burlington project.
Okay, we want to be careful. What we want to say is, just if I may, Councilman Loy, we want to be careful in our wording. And really, I think what we want to do is give a contribution. We're looking to give a one-time startup contribution of seven thousand dollars. We know what we're thinking about, but it's up to the city to decide what they'd like to do with it. Is that okay by you?
That's fine. So you can change the words around, whatever it needs to fit. I'm not the best speaker, so.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Loy for a one-time contribution to the Skagit First Step Center on the amount of seven thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, Councilman McGoffin, second motion.
All right. All right. So motion by Councilman Loy, seconded by Councilman McGoffin.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I have discussed, I have discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at page fifty-seven of our packet, which is this motion. So we're changing the a motion to approve an inter-local agreement with the City of Burlington for five thousand. We're changing that to seven thousand in financial support for the shelter projects. We're changing financial support to contribution. My, my question is in the background summary information, the last sentence, as, as a neighboring city, the City of Cedar Woolley and its residents will benefit from the shelter project. Could you expand on that, please?
So where are you at? What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, page fifty-seven, which is your memo with this motion, subject inter-local agreement, City of Burlington Shelter Project. Last sentence, under background summary information, as a neighboring city, the City of Cedar Woolley and its residents will benefit from the shelter project. Could you expand more on the benefit, please?
Well, I think it's quite obvious in that we have several individuals who are homeless that, that live not only in our community, but in other communities. And also, I think it was mentioned three or four times that there would be opportunity for our officers to be able to take someone who was homeless over to the shelter. So I think it's very beneficial. Do you want to share your thoughts on that?
That's new information that I didn't hear that about our officers being able to, being able to have access there as well. So that's something for me to ponder. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there further discussion?
I'll just stutter for a minute. Madam Mayor, I, I honestly think this is a very modest contribution. I would be more than willing to go more, but let's just stay with the flow right now, okay?
Other, is there, oh, thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion?
If we're going to discuss, and this is Councilwoman Kestie, in light of the, I guess, them saying that the potential people can come high or drunk, I, I'm going to vote against money towards it.
Okay. All right. So any more discussion? Then I am going to put it out there, all those in favor of making a one-time contribution, startup contribution to the City of Burlington. Actually, I'm going to get this right. To the Skagit First Step Center signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to go through the list here. So Councilwoman Kestie, your vote is no. All right. Councilwoman Sarah Diamond?
Yes.
Councilman Chuck Owen?
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Loy?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Brendan McGoffin?
Yes.
Councilman Carl DeYoung?
Yes.
Okay. So it stands six to seven, the motion carries. And thank you, Steve and Tina and Lisa for being here tonight. Really, it's a great program. And I just, you know, I hope that you'll actually talk with a lot of the rotaries, both in Burlington, the two in Mount Vernon, and one in Cedar Woolley. I think that would be, be great to get that information out there and see if you couldn't garner some support from them. So just one last passing thought before I say goodnight to you and thank you again for the presentation. And for the opportunity to be a part of this.
Thank you for the time, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the support, the kind words. And we're going to be working together on this for into the future. So thank you and goodnight.
Goodnight. Okay, so I don't want to keep Helping Hands hanging on. Nicole, you've been so patient, and so have you, Rebecca. I think Rebecca is still here. And so let's move on to the Helping Hands. It's pretty straightforward. They have talked about that they have access to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they have talked about what they would like to do. Rebecca did a beautiful job laying that out. Is there any more discussion regarding this?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman DeYoung?
Yeah. In the aspect of that I am the president of the board of the Helping Hands Food Bank, I am going to recuse myself because there could be an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I want to make sure that there are no appearances of a conflict of interest. So I will recuse myself from this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman DeYoung. So do I have a motion?
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I would like to just jump in real quick. The recommended action on the agenda sheet needs us, like so a motion tonight would be to authorize the mayor to sign a letter approving or denying Helping Hands request to update the residence at twenty-four seven oh three Wicker Road. It still references the gravel road, which was the last discussion we had. So I want to make sure that we make the right motion, not based on my typo, but on what we really need.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for the clarification. So do we have a motion? We're just looking for, we're just looking to give them approval to make the changes that they already have the funding for.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, a second by Councilwoman Kestie. And just approving and just approving of the, approval of the updates that are being requested by Helping Hands Food Bank for the fabulous program that they are doing and continue to do. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Excellent, okay, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you, Nicole, for being here. Thank you for all you do within the community, it's outstanding, it really is. And great success in the programs that you have coming up for fundraising. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, so we will go back to staff reports, and I will begin with Assistant Fire Chief Frank Wagner. Thank you for hanging in there, Frank, I know you're on vacation, and, and I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to say that we're still lucky to stay in Phase Three, as three counties in the state were not so lucky, they got moved back to Phase Two. Our numbers have been slightly up in the last week, but we're still trending in the right direction, hopefully after the spring break that we just had, enjoying the lovely weather. The Volunteer Association is currently in the plans of the Hundred Year Anniversary that's coming up, May twenty-first. They will also commemorate the forty years of amazing service that Chief Klinger has given us on his retirement that same day. And we're hoping to be able to have a bunch of folks out to commemorate both of those events and celebrate with us. And the association is also looking for new residents as the great job that they've been doing with getting some of these young kids hired throughout the state and career jobs. We're needing to backfill some of those folks, so we have two or three rooms that are going, they're open now, are going to be open here in the next few months. So the process is ongoing to get those folks recruited, hired, and trained, so thank you and thank you, I appreciate the, the time, Mayor.
Well, you are welcome, and for those of you who maybe didn't read it in the paper, but Frank is now our new fire chief. On April fifty came in, sworn in as our new fire chief, so if you haven't had a chance to congratulate him, please do. And we're very excited to have him come on board, and at the same time, this is all bittersweet because that means then we're losing Chief Dean Klinger, who I'm going to give opportunity to speak here in just a little bit, if you can hang in there, Chief. So next we will go to Lieutenant Dan McElroy. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll, I'll just give you a short update on our staffing. Officer Eddie has left our department, his last day was yesterday, he's moved to Florida to work as a deputy in Walton County with our former direct detective, James Hannah Wall. So, yeah, we'll, we'll be looking to fill his spot, and what we're going to miss there is, he was our commercial motor vehicle enforcement guy. So he's one stopping all those semis on the North Township and around town, so hopefully in the future we can find somebody to fill that role. It was nice to have that, and we're going to miss having that in our town. And then I just want to touch base on National Drug Takeback Day. It's coming up next Saturday, April twenty-four, ten P M, ten A M to two A M. Correction, ten A M to two P M. And it's going to be hosted here at City Hall, right on Metcalf Street, and this is, this is an event in partnership with United General District Three oh Four and Cedar Woolley Rise Community Coalition. And obviously, we have some members on, in attendance here, Carl DeYoung and, and myself and Mayor, I'm, I, I can't go through all these names on here, but there's probably several that are involved in leadership and, and involvement in this coalition. This is an event that occurs twice a year, April and October. What this event provides is an opportunity to prevent pill abuse and theft by ridding their homes of potential dangerous and expires, expired unused or unwanted medications. So we did pretty well in October, we collected about fifty pounds, so we're hoping to beat that event, but we also want to educate people too, that they don't, they don't have to wait for Drug Takeback Day to get rid of their medications, there's several locations in town where you can drop those off. Shafter Pharmacy, Homeland Pharmacy, the Cedar Woolley Police Department Lobby when we are open back again. We also have options where we have mail-in, mail-in letters that we can give out and they can send. But so just, you know, providing the education that they don't have to wait for that day, obviously, we'll take as much as possible because we do have a friendly I don't know, wager, but competition with our, our local cities, Cedar Woolley, Burlington and Mount Vernon. So we'll see what we can do this time, but it, it's all fun, it just makes it a little, a little more fun. But what we want to really do is get those off the, out of the houses and not be able to be accessed by any, anything with children and such and abused. So what, what this will do, it'll be a drive-through event right on Metcalf Street. And if any, any one of you want to come say hi, you're more welcome and see what we're doing out there, it's a great event, and hey, that's all I got for you today.
Well, that's, that's great, though, it's great information. Yeah, I had opportunity to do that myself when it was actually being held out at the pavilion, and lots of people participate, it's actually greatly appreciated by the community. So thank you, thank you for doing, taking the time to do this, Lieutenant.
Absolutely.
Um, moving on, moving on to Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening, Council. I'll, most of my comments will be with a couple of presentations or items on the agenda later, so I'll defer until then, Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you. Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So this week we did our annual reporting to the Office of Financial Management, the state agency. We report our, our permit activity, how many permits have been issued over the past, between April first of this year and April first of last year. And from that is they determine the, the estimated population of Cedar Woolley as of April first, twenty twenty-one. And that's, that's the, the population projection, the population information that we generally refer to with, with the city popu, when, when we talk about city population. So we just did our reporting, and we expect in early to mid-June for the Office of Financial Management to get us that information, and then we'll know the, the rate that we're growing. In general, it looks like we had roughly fifty units of, of new housing. So that, that's equates to roughly a hundred or so people, new residents over the past year. So I know there's been a lot of concern about the, the growth of the city, and this will give us some real data of how many people are, are joining our citizenry year to year. And the Planning Commission will continue working on, they're having a public hearing Tuesday on the what we're now calling digital signs, and how we will regulate those, and specifically regulations for the Central Business District. And aside from that, they will also begin their work on updating the Cedar Woolley Design Standards and Guidelines Manual with a keen focus on the Central Business District buildings and how those design review standards affect changes to our downtown buildings. So looking forward to getting started on that. In addition, we're, but Planning Department's working on the Hanson Annexation, which I think was, gosh, I can't remember. It's been a couple of months since he was at the council when he made some motions to allow them to proceed with that. So they're getting close to having the material ready to submit and having, but a potential annexation to the city council probably in a couple of months, but just want to let you know it's out there, it hasn't gone away. That's all I have to report for this evening.
All right, thank you, John. Director of I T, Bill Chambers.
I'll keep this brief, um, we're continuing the outfitting of the public safety vehicles with technology, lots of work to do with new hires and people coming and going. The cemetery management software, R F P, I think I mentioned last time that we had two submittals for that, Simsites and Romaker. And we'll be forwarding a recommendation to the city supervisor here probably tomorrow on how to proceed with that. Next week, the Avidex will be here to install the Phase Two point one of the Council Chamber's A V upgrade. This is the audio portion, and they should be done by Wednesday before the Thursday court date. Working with, with Doug and Jill on some demos for payroll, H R, and asset management software, and lots of public surplus vehicle and equipment activity. That's about it.
All right, thank you, Bill. Financial Manager Jill Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'll keep this brief as well, as I know we have a lot more to address. We are working on the final closing steps for the city's financial statements for two thousand twenty. And once we've closed, we'll have a preliminary set of financial data that we'll be able to use for reviewing the results of our operations for last year. What's critical right now is for us to start inventorying revenue losses and other impacts of COVID in preparation for the city possibly receiving some American Recovery Plan grant funds in the near future. I also, I did email a twenty twenty-one first quarter budget position report this afternoon to all of you, so hopefully you will have that in your email inbox. And that report basically just shows our budget to actual revenue and expenses for the first three months of this year. As Will mentioned, we're also looking at a program for just some human resource and time sheet payroll-related tasks, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jill. City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Good evening, I'm going to keep this brief as well. We discussed a few months ago the possibility of moving quasi-judicial decisions from the council to the hearing examiner, and I just wanted to let you know that that draft ordinance is circulating, and we should have that in front of you within your next few meetings. So that's all I have to add this evening.
All right, thank you, thank you, Nikki. City Supervisor Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. A few items real quick for you. Some of the things going off my desk, as you can tell, I get in and work with the departments on some of these projects that are going on, and we have a good team working on these things. One of these is working with Jill on closing up our fiscal year twenty twenty. She gave you a couple of notes that we're looking for. One of the key things is we have the potential to get some grant funding from the American Rescue Plan. And one of the areas we're focusing on is revenue losses, so any places during twenty twenty where COVID impacted some of our revenue streams, like rental income from our facilities, those types of things.
Rhonda made dinner, so I'm going to go eat.
Um, yeah, thank you.
To apply for that grant funding and hopefully get some reimbursement for that. One of the projects tomorrow will be talking with our H R consultant. This is about doing our employee policy manual. I've mentioned this once or twice before. We have a draft in place, Nikki, our city attorney, pulled one together and gave the initial comments. And then Carr and I are going to be going through, and as well, the mayor looking at these and actually getting a pretty comprehensive set of employee policies in place. As I mentioned before, we've been operating under one that's been from nineteen ninety. So there've been a few things in the H R world that we need to get into our policies and make it a good working book for us. The finance director search, we're back to square one and a half right now. The main thing that we run into is people are just not moving, so it's, getting creative is going to be the deal, I think. I did reach out to some of my contacts out in the industry who are like bond attorneys and different people, because they kind of know what's going on in other cities and who's thinking of moving and that. So I've gotten a couple of contacts call me back, so we're kind of shaking the trees a little bit and seeing if we can find a good candidate for us. One other thing we're doing is myself and the management team, we are going to be going through some leadership training. And I was able to arrange with the Washington Cities Insurance Authority for our staff to join into their supervisory leadership program. It's a three-course program that each of us will go through and teaches us a lot of good things, especially when we get into the area succession planning. We have a lot of staff that have been here a long time, and we really need to be cultivating our managers now and our managers to be, and this will be a good program. It's a very popular program, we thought we were going to be able to get into it this summer, but it may be October or later before we can actually get openings to get in there. And just a couple other quick things, I'm working on a solid waste fund, funding analysis, and this will give you some information about our solid waste fund, and do our rates cover the different commodities? For example, does what we charge for recycling cover recycling? Does what we charge for residential cover the residential component? So it's smart, even though we do rate studies every few years, it's nice to come back in and actually balance your fund because, for example, your residential areas can grow faster than your commercial areas. So pretty soon that residential area might start subsidizing some of those other areas. So it's always good to kind of get in, it won't mean a rate increase or anything like that, it just means you adjust your rates between those different classes. So we can have more on that fun topic sometime in the future when we get that all wrapped up. And I think that's all that I had to share for tonight.
All right, thank you. And Chief Dean Klinger, I'm going to, I'm going to go to you at this point, I know you have a few words you'd like to share, and please take your time, say what you'd like to say.
I'll, I'll be brief as well, Mayor. My, as, as has been stated before, my last day here with the city, actually physically walking in the building will be the twenty-first of May coming up, that's the same day as the hundredth anniversary of the department, as Frank stated. We hope you all are able to attend, this department's got a, a, a great history, and we'd love for you to see some of that. This, this will be my last council meeting that I will be attending, since I will not be present at any of the other ones that are forthcoming. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, it was a pleasure working with you over the years. And Sarah, I'm sorry, I won't get a chance to work with you at all, but I'm sure we'll see each other around in the community. We were doing the math here, and I think I've been to a little over six hundred and fifty city council meetings. So it's a, it's a good time to go ahead and bow out. You've got an excellent new chief there, and Frank, he's going to do a fantastic job. And once again, I just want to say thank you for affording me this opportunity to, to work for all of you, and I wish you the best of luck. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Dean, thank you. Okay, so we'll go to council reports, and I will begin with Joelle and Kestie, Councilwoman Joelle and Kestie.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Sarah and welcome her to the council. I'd also like to remind everyone with all this beautiful weather that we're having to take advantage of the free yard waste drop-off that's going on every Monday and Saturday, eight A M to four P M until April twenty-six. I spoke with Leo, and so far, a hundred and seventy-five people have already used it. And tomorrow, April fifteenth marks eighty-eight years since the murder of Night Marshal Carl Strom, who was fatally shot after discovering a gang of robbers trying to break into the Bingham Bank. So I wanted to take a moment to honor his memory. That's all I have.
That was sweet, thank you. Thank you for the history, sometimes. That was sweet. Thank you. Thank you for the history. Sometimes we forget our history. Okay, and Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
I would just like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity here to join this great council and I look forward to serving. Chief Klinger, I'm very sorry I'm not able to be a part of it here with you, but I know you have done an amazing job over the years that you've served and I'm incredibly grateful for that as a member of the community and I do look forward to seeing you out and about. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to Councilman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also welcome Sarah to the council. I haven't had a chance to talk with her personally, but I'm going to make that effort. And I want to congratulate Chief Klinger. He's, he's basically dedicated his whole life to the city of Seidrooly and we appreciate you, Chief, and we wish you the best. And I hope we see you around from time to time. And also Frank, you couldn't, you couldn't have picked a better guy as Frank. He's, he's a very nice person. And he knows his job very well and he's, he's so friendly. He's easy to talk to. So Frank, congratulations to you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Councilman Kevin Loy.
I don't have much, but I'd like to send a big aloha to the chief on his retirement. And I'd like to send a big aloha to Sarah on her joining us.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Glenn Allen.
Well, welcome, Sarah. Glad to have you aboard. Congratulations, Dean. Known you for many moons and I just hope we can get back to where I can actually meet three new council people in person within a month or two. Okay, thanks. I know you, you're controlling the COVID, but you know, I hope we can get together as a group, okay?
I hear you. I hear you. I agree. I'm looking forward to that day too. Thank you, Glenn. Councilman Brendan McOffen.
All right, thank you. I'd also just like to thank the chief for all of his years of service and I hope to see him around and most likely at the bakery. I'd also like to welcome Sarah to the council. I'm looking forward to when we can all get back together. Hopefully that soon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Thank you. Also would like to welcome Councilmember Diamond to the council. Looking forward to working with you. Looking forward to working with new chief Wagner. Really appreciate his temperament and his leadership style, which I'm sure was carefully crafted by Chief Klinger. Chief Klinger, all the best in your retirement. It's well deserved. Just wanted to alert folks, the Public Works has been trimming alleyways prior to some pothole filling, which I'm very excited to hear about. And to Mark, thank you so much for getting the solar powered stop sign at Jamison and Township. Neighborhood is pretty happy about that. So just wanted to bring that on. And of course, talking to neighbors about roundabouts, Earth Day is coming up and just wanted to also piggyback on Drug Take Back Day, extremely important. And I am happy to report that House Bill 1189 is cruising through a little bit and that will help us with some more infrastructure projects by not increasing the state portion of property taxes. But it's called tax increment financing and I'm sure that's something that will help out Doug and and our Public Works Department. And then I am getting reconstructive surgery on my hand next Wednesday, so I might not be able to type as fast as I have been. So if I could seek a little compassion on some responses. That's it. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to make my report quick as well. I'm kind of going through here. I had a lot, but I just, first off, I want to extend again to you, Dean. The, the thanks and the gratitude of the community. I know I'm going to have another opportunity to do this somewhere along the line, but I wanted to say that to you tonight. I also want to welcome onboard Frank Wagner. He's been amazing to work with and I know that it's just going to continue to be that way. He's got, he's got that same great vision and that same clarity, same intelligence and that same skill to mentor people coming on, our new volunteers coming on. So I know that the quality and the the abilities of our, of our department is just going to continue to grow and do well. Welcome, Sarah. Welcome to the first council meeting. This is kind of an unusual one, but welcome. I want to remind everybody that the council working retreat is Friday, May 7th. It'll be from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. We will supply dinner. It'll be like a light dinner. And the presentation of our managers will be, directors and managers will actually be the Wednesday before on May 5th, which is our usual council work meeting. I want the council to know that after our discussion regarding the, the I call it destruction, but it's the tagging that took place at the Northern State Hospital Cemetery. We spoke with, he was a former teacher, Mr. Hooderman. And it was his students who actually raised the money for both the memorial wall and the plaque. The plaque was actually donated, as we found out, from Lomly Chapel. And so it was, it's a, it's a community memorial that's actually standing there in honor of all those individuals, those 1,500 individuals who are buried there. Mr. Hooderman said that he would like to see the plaque remain there. So we're going to work on that. We're working on the funding, getting, getting the permitting so that we can do, use our funding to do the fencing. Once the fencing is done, then we'll put the plaque inside. We'll figure out a way to do the plaques inside where they can be seen and displayed and not damaged. So that's what we're looking to do. Mr. Hooderman wanted to extend his sincere thanks and gratitude to not only the city of Seidrooly, but to you, council, for your compassion and your dedication to remembering those souls who lived in our community and also died within our community. So thank you for doing that. And we did sign the documents with PUD. So the agreement that you heard George talk about that we had discussed that is in place and that will be very helpful to a lot of our citizens here in Seidrooly using the metrics that actually he discussed, we discussed and that are in place. And I also just want to mention that the Association of Cities put out a plea to city officials and also to city leaders to sign a letter on behalf that, for the capital monies that are needed to do the projects that are going to be coming forth with the bills that are being passed. And our own fire chief Frank Wagner signed it, Councilman Carl DeYoung signed it, and I also signed it from the city. So we do have good representation there, but there were over 100 mayors and representatives who signed that letter. So very impactful. So moving on then, so I'm looking at 20 minutes left and I want to move through this agenda as quickly as possible.
I have a question about the summit. Will, will we have a Zoom call in or a phone call in available? Because I'm going to be out of town on the 7th. Will, will there be an ability to call in or Zoom for that summit?
I, we, I'll discuss that with you later if that's okay, Carl.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's move forward with, with the agenda. So final plat approval, phase one. And John, this is to you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you again. So this is a really easy thing that in the future is typically put on the consent agenda. And this is a final approval of a final plat. This is part one of a two phased plat. So the council approved the preliminary plat of Brickyard Park earlier this, earlier, later last year. And so after that is done, the developer goes out and builds per the city specs, the roads, the infrastructure for the housing development. And then when they're done installing all of the roads and all of the signs are up and every every I has been dotted and every T has been crossed, then then they recorded the final plat. And at that point, they, they have, you know, 42 different lots. So this is just a formality of acknowledging that they've done everything per city standards and that all of the proper documentation is in place and it's ready for, ready for final plat approval. So we asked the council to make a motion to adopt a resolution granting final plat approval.
All right. Thank you. And that'll be resolution 1067-21. So is there any questions or discussion, questions for John, or any discussion regarding the plat approval? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion? Madam Mayor. Motion to adopt resolution 1067-21 granting final plat approval for phase one of the plat of Brickyard Park. It's a planned residential development, a 42 lot subdivision, authorizing either mayor to sign those documents.
Madam Mayor, I make that motion. Councilman.
I second. Councilwoman. Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilwoman Kestee to approve and to adopt resolution 1067-12. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Fantastic. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Okay, moving on to the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I'm going to turn this over to Mark Freiberger. Before I do, I would like to welcome those members that I see here from that council, that committee, Judy Jones, Matthew Devine, Jennifer Salesman, and Eric Johnson. Did I miss anybody? All right, Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading for this. I did a fairly long presentation at the last meeting and I think I'll just open up the questions. If you have any questions on it and if you're satisfied, we'd be ready to entertain your motion on that. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, so is there a motion to adopt the attached ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Loy.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman DeYoung. So we have a motion by Councilman Loy and seconded by Councilman DeYoung to adopt the attached ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign? Thank you. Motion carries. All right. And moving on to the Reed Street property and Mr. Merriman, this is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At the end of 2020, City Council had discussions about the possibility of purchasing a piece of property at 121 North Reed Street. This is a parcel of property owned by the Ralph family that is right adjacent to our park property there. I have been in contact with the Ralph family and over the last couple of months, we've came to a negotiated value that we had on the property. Cities are required to have an appraisal done when you buy real estate and you can negotiate to some degree on what you pay for that. Because appraisers, if you go from one to the other, they can have a little bit of a range on where they value properties. So what we tentatively agreed on with the owners is they had an appraisal done. That appraisal came in at 110,000. The city had an appraisal done as well. Our appraisal came in at 95,000. So we shook hands and said, okay, let's go ahead. We'll make the offer at the midpoint. We'll just average the two. And that is at a suggested purchase price of $102,500. And I've attached the purchase and sale agreement that spells out the different details. Basically, the seller and buyer split the escrow fee and the seller pays the normal closing cost such as title insurance and those items that the seller would pay. So I requested action for you tonight is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of property at 121 North Reed Street in the amount of $102,500.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Are there any questions for Doug? Hearing none? Any comments? And if not, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Kestee. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and purchase a sales agreement for the purchase of the parcel of property located at 121 North Reed Street for the amount of $102,500.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilman McGoffin, a second.
Yes. Thank you. So a motion by Councilwoman Kestee, seconded by Councilman McGoffin to authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement in the amount of $102,000, $102,500. That is the parcel at Reed Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Excellent. And our last item tonight is Under New Business and this is the possible BNSF agreement. It's the Phase One Funding Agreement for the Jones Road, John Liner Road Connector. And Mr. Freiberger, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And as Mayor mentioned, this is our long awaited agreement with BNSF Railway to do the pier installation, the piling installation and purchase the bridge deck for the under crossing to connect Jones Road and John Liner Road. As you recall, this is the critical project to support the Jones John Liner Trail corridor projects. Without this, the whole project simply doesn't go forward. So this is the really critical piece. We have been waiting for months, literally, to see this agreement. We've had it in our hands for about two weeks. So we've been going back and forth with some last minute negotiations. BNSF is, is, is kind of a super, super agency and, and doesn't generally bend much on, on their agreements. But we were successfully able to intercede or interject some things and they've done that. There's some things we don't particularly like in it, but BNSF is still working to move this project forward on our behalf while protecting their interests. There's a few things in particular I'd like to point out to you on this. And by the way, this is pages 192 and following in your council packets. In the agreement itself, Article 3, Paragraph 3 acknowledges that either, either party has agreed to participate in or permit construction of the improvements of this project. And either party has the right to not move forwards with a second phase, which will come up in the future. And I should back up just a little bit and say, the funding that we received from Wash dot rails for this through legislature in 2020 basically provided enough funds to, to pay BNSF Railway to design and install the bridge complete. As we were doing the early negotiations on this, we found that there were some real potential pitfalls with completing the structure with this early phase. Mainly because we are building this project, kind of betting on the come, that additional funding would come forth in the future from the legislature or whatever source to complete the later project. There is the risk with that, that if money did not ever come to pass or it got too, too far down the road and was no longer in either party's interest to continue, then there's a bridge structure that needs to be owned and maintained by somebody. That's going to be a real problem in the future. So when working with BNSF, what we So when working with BNSF, what we settled on was driving the piles, which is ninety percent of the project in this case, because the piles could be up to a hundred and eighty feet deep, a hundred and sixty feet below the twenty-two feet or so grade that, that is out there. And that's most of the expense. And also purchasing the bridge deck and storing that until it can be installed. In that instance, if there was a case where the funding never developed or it was too long or whatever changes in the future, and we're not able to come to a, an agreement on a final phase here, which would involve both placing the final bridge deck and removing the crossing at Sap Road, then either party could walk away basically with, with no real problems. There would be some residual expense to cut off the piles below grade. We do anticipate that they will be below grade anyway with the installation because they have a working track that will have to be maintained and serviced. So the, the risk of a future cost to do that is, is pretty minimal on our part. So what this agreement does then, there's this phase one to drive the piles and to purchase the bridge deck members themselves and the abutments and store them. Phase two then would come in later and actually excavate far enough down in the grade to install the new bridge deck itself, reinstall the track and go back into business. And it also includes yet to be fully scoped out closure of Sap Road, the existing Sap Road crossing. Now, BNSF is very interested in that because of the maintenance issues with the old bridge, its proximity to the Fish Bering Stream and also that single lane roadway, which we've had some tragic accidents on in the past. And the city is interested in that as well. As well as our partner agencies such as the school district, who have been driving buses through that single lane crossing there over the years, which is a pretty, actually hazardous things to do with the site distance there. So we have a phase one and a phase two that would be future. This agreement is strictly for phase one. The terms and conditions apply to phase one, but it mentions that the city and BNSF will continue to work on moving forward with a phase two. Now, why is it important that BNSF participates as willingly as they have on this project? Well, quite frankly, if we had to come to them and say, we want to build a bridge, what's it going to take to do that? And we had to design the bridge, then we would not only have to pay BNSF for a permit for the undercrossing itself, the value to use their right of way. But we also would own that bridge, maintain that bridge and be on track in the future for, for any modifications to that bridge that would be required to, to modify that. In the case, BNSF did something like double tracking this. Certain parts of that scenario are relieved by their cooperation in this, mainly the fact that BNSF has already said beforehand, we will allow you to use our right of way. That's pretty huge. And another big kind of indeterminate cost is loss of track usage during the time of construction. BNSF is not charging us for any delay in their railway. They will schedule that around both this pile driving, which is coming up, and the future bridge installation so that basically they will, they will reroute trains as needed to complete the work. And that's pretty huge. We, when we were originally estimating to do this, this project, we had an allowance of six million dollars for this undercrossing. And this basically is going to cost us under a million with what we're seeing here now. So anyway, some provisions in the agreement to point out to you again on page one ninety-three. Article four, paragraph six includes a sunset provision in the event that phase two is not funded within five years. One of the changes we asked them to make, which they accepted, is that that five years can be extended indefinitely by mutual agreement of the two parties. Article four, paragraph six, six B notes that the city assumes ownership and maintenance of the new structure. As I mentioned before, the provisions of this agreement apply strictly to what's installed under this agreement. So we will own the piling and we will own the bridge deck itself, which will be stored until it's installed. BNSF will put that in storage, probably here in Seadrill Woolley in a fenced compound on their property. Now, that particular provision and the, and the next one, Article four, paragraph eight, is where the phase two agreement is going to be the subject of some pretty detailed negotiations and well. Because depending on what we find out with Sap Road, on who actually owns that bridge, it could be BNSF owns it. It could be that Skagit County owns it, where the, the existing bridge, because it's in Skagit County right of way. We have not been able to determine that as yet. It goes back probably near the building of the original railway. And I don't even know exactly where that was before the fifties. I think the bridge on, on on Highway twenty was nineteen fifty-four structure, as I recall. So in the case that we're able to swap, closing one bridge for another, we've got a pretty good argument with BNSF, which they acknowledge that they don't get a net new bridge and will be, will be lobbying hard that they will own the bridge in that case and the maintenance that goes with it. In the case that the bridge at Sap actually belongs to the agency, then we've got some negotiations to do with Skagit County as well that will deal with how we handle the liability of owning a new bridge. Be that as it may, if we want to have this bridge and it is a new structure, then we will own it and we will own the maintenance on that, you know, pretty much in perpetuity. That's, that's not at all uncommon when you build a, a new structure related to the railway. What is concerning to us, and we've discussed it length internally, is that if BNSF does in the future decide to double track the railway, for instance, then the clause that they had in the preliminary agreement, which is not in this one, has been taken out, does indicate that the city would also be responsible if there had to be a second bridge put in to accommodate an extra track, so to, so to speak. Then we'd be on the hook for that. That would be a future liability that we really don't much, have much of a handle on at this point. That will be negotiated during the phase two agreement. Now, I will say, we've looked at this and discussed it at length. What is the actual risk of them ever adding a second track to this line? We think it's pretty minimal. One of the rail bosses actually, when they heard we were asking about that and said, well, that thing will be built sometime after twenty twenty, twenty-six twenty or something like that. And what they're saying is, is nobody knows what the future holds on these things. This one would be a very difficult to double track just because they would also have to buy right of way pretty much across the city and all the way to the north because of it's being elevated between sixteen and twenty-two feet in the air. So the risk is relatively small, but it is something that will rest in the phase two agreement. The final provision that I wanted to point out to you that there is a Article three, paragraph seven that requires the city to give BNSF notice to proceed before they will start work. It actually says thirty days, but BNSF has agreed to, assuming you prove that the, the agreement on our part tonight to start the work on May the first. They're geared up to do that. They actually had already purchased piling for the project and, and they are ready to go. And we have also scheduled with PSE to kill the power where we have to drive the piling out there. There's a high voltage line that crosses right over one of the vents for the pile. So that's where we're at tonight. And we're requesting your action to authorize Mayor Johnson to complete negotiations and sign phase one of the funding agreement for the Jones Road, John Liner Road connector underpass. Just to give you the amount of dollars, we, we had a eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Wash Dot Rails, of which eight hundred and twenty-five thousand was set up in the agreement to reimburse BNSF for their work. And the final agreement states the number as eight twenty-five five fifty. Slightly different, but not a problem for us to do. So that is what is before us, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about this.
Okay. Just quickly before we do, it is exactly eight PM, or that's what I have on my computer. So if there are not any objections, we will extend the meeting to no later than eight thirty. Any objections?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to extend the meeting till, up to eight thirty.
Okay, motion, so.
Second.
All right. Well, a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman DeYoung to extend the meeting for another thirty minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Council. So questions, questions for Mr. Freiberger regarding this phase one project?
I've got a question for him. I read the whole thing. It's kind of interesting. But I got one, it's just, I gotta tell you, it's a silly question, but I'm going to ask it just for the hell of it. There's a provision in there that the city has to, is required to keep the birds, creatures and vermin away. How much did you, how much did you appropriate for keeping the vermin away?
Well, we didn't appropriate too much. They left that up to me to go out and take care of it if it becomes a problem. Again, this is, this agreement deals strictly with the phase one work. It's for piling that's being driven into the ground. The birds would have to burrow into the, into the embankment to do that. So I'm, I'm not too concerned. I'll get called out of my office to do it on this agreement.
I had to ask because I've never seen that in a contract before.
Yeah, it's common with them. In fact, it'll be in the phase two agreement because that's one of their standard provisions when an agency builds a structure either over or they have to do an overpass, an underpass. So, and it's kind of like I was talking about the likelihood of the double tracking. BNSF is a unionized company and their union agreement with their workers does not allow anybody else to work on their, their facilities. So if, here's what would happen if once, once the phase two bridge is built, there was too much bird trackings or whatever, burrows or whatever had been dug in the embankment. BNSF would notify the city of this provision in the agreement, if they can find the agreement, that's a question. Then I would have to call them up and arrange for a track window to where we could go out and do the work, hire somebody to go do it or send one of our crew out that are trained to do BNSF, work on the BNSF right of way, which our, our public works guys do maintain that training. Then the union would file a grievance against the BNSF management for scheduling work by the agency on the right of way. And BNSF would say, okay, you guys go fix it. That's the way that's generally done. So it's not a high risk thing, but it's the standard provision, like I said, that they have in all of their agreements.
Excuse me, Mark.
Yes. Go ahead. Councilman Allen? Um, you're on mute?
Oh, I thought you said Councilwoman Joel. And okay, sorry. I've got to change the hearing aid batteries. Okay. You know, the only thing I'm concerned about is the phase two. I mean, what is our liability on that?
So essentially, depending on what happens with the Sap Road crossing, we could own a new bridge. These structures that BNSF builds, and this is the reason they're doing it rather than us hiring somebody to do it, they're built to last a century and more. The maintenance on a new bridge like this is very minimal. You see on the old bridge crossing Highway twenty, you occasionally see trains, work trains going over that thing. Generally, they're dealing with the old timber abutments out on the outside and changing the, the ties out. That's the wear item they have. The bridge itself, that structure is from nineteen fifties, as I mentioned to you. These new ones they're building now out of steel and concrete, you know, hundred plus years. So we're, we're looking at minimal, minimal liability with this, really. Yeah, and, and the track maintenance itself is not included in the ownership of the bridge. So anything they have to do to keep the rail up and put in their ties and do that kind of maintenance. The maintenance of the, the soil itself, the, the grade, that's all still there. It's strictly the structure itself.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize Mayor Johnson to complete negotiations and sign the phase one funding agreement for the Jones Road and John Liner Road connector underpass.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Councilman Owen, I'd second.
Okay, all those. To me, this is a really big deal. So I, I have to be honest with you. I agonized over this because of concerns that I had not knowing a lot of answers, not sure what phase two might bring, as Councilman Allen had brought up. So I am going to go down the list and actually ask for a vote, yea or nay, on this. And I'll begin with Councilwoman Kestie. It's a yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Diamond?
Yes.
Councilman Chuck Owen?
Yea.
Councilman Kevin Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Allen?
Since Mr. Freiberger explained it, yes. Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brendan McGoffin?
Yes.
And Councilman Carl DeYoung?
Yes.
So that is seven, and that passes. All right, thank you. And thank you, Council, for, you know, great questions participating in the council tonight. We had two great presentations with Helping Hands Food Bank and with the Skagit. I'm calling it the Peas Road Home Shelter. But I appreciate all the questions that you asked, looking for clarification and participating. I want to wish you a good night and we are adjourned. Thank you.